Yeah. Well, is Tim gonna like spearhead that?
Well, they're on top.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Warren County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 6, 2023. It's 9:30 a.m., and we're in the boardroom. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. The first item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. I would move the consent agenda. All items printed, looks like A through U. I'll...
I'll move a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for rezoning application for land from A1 Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial Highway Service District as submitted by Cody Sinclair representing Inception Group LLC. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do we need to go into public hearing?
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Aye. We're now in public hearing.
Thank you. Cody Sinclair, 101 South Jefferson Way, Indianola, Iowa. He's part owner of Inception Group LLC. They're asking to rezone approximately 41.5 acres of ground from A1 Agricultural to C2 Highway Service Commercial to be used for outdoor storage. After we had met with the City of Indianola and the applicant Inception Group, we had a joint meeting with them. We decided that this application is the first step for Inception Group as they plan. They have multiple plans for this area. As they move forward, there will be additional rezoning applications. This is along Highway 6569, just north of Indianola. There's currently C2 zoning to the west in the county, and then there's commercial, ag, and residential zoning south of Indianola. The night of the meeting, a number of residents spoke to the zoning commission. They voiced concerns about traffic, the bike trail, the long-term plans for this area, and the perception of outdoor storage as you come into the City of Indianola. We also spoke that night, and we understood the same concerns that they had with the perception, you know, with the outdoor storage. So we also spoke on that behalf as well, and we understood the concerns from the public. So the zoning commission, they had the same reservations. Some of the reservations were the timing of the project. They... One of them felt that it was rushed, the impression of coming in and out. Then they had a discussion about screening. So that night, they made a motion to recommend approval from A1 to C2, subject to screening either by vegetation or fencing surrounding that area. So all members voted in favor, except for Rooney. He voted against, and he just had concerns that this was a... The project was rushed.
Mm-hmm.
I'm curious, was there any discussion about frontage road access or anything like that off of Highway 65?
Yes, they do have access off of Highway 65, and they can probably speak to that as well. The applicant is here today. So they do have current access. They're gonna use the same entrance coming in and out that they have... That they've been using over the years, or the previous owner.
Okay. Anything else for Miranda? I have no... I have no questions about that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we hear from the owner? Lee, could you state your name and your address, please?
I'm Lee Adams, 17567 120th Avenue in Indianola. It's down by Lake Aquabee. Yeah, I'm one of the owners of Inception Group. Obviously, it's a 277 overall acre project. We wanted to get the front part. That's going to be the commercial and the long-term plan rezoned. This outside storage thing is really... That's not the end-all of the plan. As we got into this project, it's going to be a long drawn-out project. It's gonna be five to 10 years. You know, they want traffic studies. Right now, there's no sewer or anything capable of even handling the front part. You know, the bike trail concerns, it's just like anything. We'll figure it out when we get there. It's going to be several years before we even get down to that part. But we're doing some water remediation studies right now and some stuff like that, but this is just the beginning of it, so...
Can you speak to like the aesthetic appearance of the storage facility and what it's gonna look like?
You know, as I've... When you come from the north to the south, as I look over there, you can't even see it because there's kind of a hump there. There's some big evergreens there right now. We'll certainly, you know, do whatever to... But it is kinda hidden now. Now, when you come south going north, you can see it better there. So probably, right now, there's a water area for the highway, and we're getting that worked through right now with the engineers working with whoever does that stuff. So that probably... Yeah, we'll just have to, you know, do what it takes. You know, we don't want no big eyesore there, and we'll certainly do that, so... But there's some big evergreens there now, and they had it, I suppose, for snow protection and...
Mm-hmm.
But yeah. We can have the engineer maybe draw up how it looks. We gotta make sure we can fill in that hole that's kinda there in the front right now, right next to Phillips floors. And then, once we get that, then we'll have a good idea of how we can lay it out.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. Any questions from the board?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
You bet.
Are there any comments from the public regarding this project? Could you come forward and say your name and your address and your concerns or comments?
Nathan Stevie.
Okay.
Where do you live? What's your address?
8590 143rd Avenue. I guess a couple of questions. I'm a veteran of Iowa Department of Natural Resources, so since I know some of the water rights and that kinda thing. Is it gonna be a porous surface for parking, or is it gonna be a solid surface like concrete? For the storage area, is it going to be a porous surface or is it gonna be a solid surface for parking?
Um, porous.
Porous, okay. And then, the other question is, how large of the size was that gonna be? Because I know that they have to pull permits for over a certain size, and they have to put the buffer strips in for erosion control and whatnot. On an overall basis, for this and for the other things, we are very concerned about the water because my wife and I went 40 grand out of pocket for two driveways because everybody tiles, and by the time you put in solid surface, new drainage, new housing roofs, new concrete, that all expounds to our water table that runs into the river. And so, we had our driveway blown out once, had to replace it for 20 grand. The next year, we got seven inches of rain again. It blew that six-foot culvert out, and then we had to put in another 10-foot culvert, and it was just... It depleted all of our savings. And so, we're very leery of any of the water and how any of the water is going to be drained around our land because it has been a huge problem back there. And I know even further north to an apiary business that is operating up on... That's operating up on the floodplain area there. If we have any additional water influx there, they're gonna be flooded out for most of their season doing beekeeping. So that was just a little stint. I know that the studies can be done, and the permits can be pulled and whatnot, but we're really concerned about what the water is gonna look like and what the drainage is gonna look like because it does cause a big, big problem for everybody upstream.
Is that... Does it matter if it's porous or if it's hard cer... You're contending that if it's hard surface, it creates more of a problem for you?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, because you have to have... Well, and anytime you put a parking structure down, you're gonna have to do a hard-packed clay, and then a... And then, you're gonna pack in an aggregate underneath that, three- or four-inch aggregate, and then you're gonna top that with roadstone if it's going to be a porous surface. So... But even with that porous surface, it's gonna go in, and it's gonna hit that clay liner, and then it's not gonna seep in. It's still gonna have to run somewhere. So anytime you put in large areas porous or not, it adds to the water drainage issues that the people in the country have. So, which is also the farmers tiling and everything else, but we've already... We're already past that point. So we're looking to mitigate where we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that the... Unfortunately, I've dealt with these types of issues before, and his concern is probably very valid. And so, maybe, Lee, would you like to address some of that drainage issue? Because I think those are serious questions that really do need... Do need to be addressed.
Yeah. Yeah, in the... I guess as far as the outside storage part, we're gonna pour no concrete. Our contention was the rock then would scoop up and become part of the larger development. I guess that kinda goes to my point. A project of this size, it's gonna take some time. You know, there's a pond out back there now. Snyder's is, I'm sure, looking at all of that. So... But in the beginning, we're gonna pour no concrete. And like I say, the rock then would become part of... I mean, I imagine you got a couple of years just before anything gets approved. It's gonna be a staged-out project. The front part there is pretty flat. I don't... I don't... Are you on the... Nathan, are you on the backside of the... Your property?
I'm back east side.
East side.
The backside.
Yeah.
But I have to look at the water relief maps to know where the water is flowing.
Yeah. If I had to guess right now, it's going in the highway ditch. It's...
Before...
Yeah. If I had to guess, the water there...
So, as far as...
It's hilly, and there's creeks back there, and, you know, ravines. And there's one big pond that's kinda on the 40 that would be east of this part for rezoning, so...
As far as what we're approving today, if we approve this, it would be just for the one portion of the overall project.
Correct, yep.
So this would be just the beginning, so that we don't lose sight of this going forward for the bigger project.
Right.
Because I see the bigger layout here, of course.
And that's just a... Kind of a conceptual proposal.
Yeah. So, as we go forward, I mean, if we approve this today, I assume you're gonna come back for the other parcels that are along the way then and ask for additional C2 rezoning.
No, that's the only part that's gonna be C2.
Will be the only one up front?
Yep. Yep, and then the rest of it'll be residential.
You'll have to change the zoning on that for agricultural to residential at that point.
Correct, yep.
So, when you start to do the next phase of this, are you gonna bring it on a piece-by-piece basis or are you gonna do a larger conceptual...
I imagine then that'll be the final overall conceptual plan.
So then, in terms of the drainage concern, if there is an issue that's coming forth, you'll need to address it then at that time?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Unfortunately, I've dealt with a situation like this before, and when he's talking about blowing out driveways and stuff like that, oh, you know...
Yep.
It is a real concern because you do have to watch out for that sort of stuff. Otherwise, you have the Grand Canyon developing.
You bet. Hey, and I appreciate where they're coming from. I live in the country. We just had a new development up the road, and I called there and, hey, what's going on over there? You know, because all the neighbors were... Yeah, so, once we get to that, yeah, there'll be... I can't even imagine where the drainage ponds and, you know, we'll have to address the safety of the bike trail and all those things. It's... That'll just be part of... But that'll be one big project then, once we get to that part. So the C2 in there, this is about what... You know, like Charlie said, there might be a couple of feet that we might have to adjust, but that's gonna be the commercial part of it. And that's the part that'll need, you know, sewer, water. And I imagine that second phase will need it also because that might be a little heavier residential. And then, the back part, kind of behind the bike trail, and that's gonna be eight-acre lots. Eight to... Seven to eight-acre lots back in there. And we're anticipating them being on septic. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of work to be done yet so on all of that, so...
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I think, you know, we wanna encourage development, of course.
Sure, yep.
But we need to do it responsibly, and it sounds like you're trying to do it responsibly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, that's... I mean, it... Yeah, that's why it's, you know... You know, probably, we got a little bit of economic uncertainty right now, so I'm not in a big rush to, you know, get into, you know, big housing development there, so... But as we go along, yeah, we'll be, I'm sure, in front of you guys in the city many times.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Please come forward.
Ryan Nelson, 14231 Harding Trail, Indianola. To add on to the water issues and everything else and stuff, my wife and I bought our property about a year and a half ago. We are down the hill and everything else, not too far from that river and everything like that. If they do do this full development that they're designing and everything else and stuff, put in all these houses they've got in their long-term plans and everything, if it raises the water table more than a handful of inches, it's gonna force our entire property into a floodplain. I mean, our entire house is going to decrease in value drastically by forcing... We have two and a half acres. About two and a quarter of that would be in a floodplain if they raise that water table, which is gonna be a huge issue on a house that... I mean, we just purchased it. We just saved up all our money and everything else to be able to finally move out into the country where we both grew up, everything like that. Did all that by this property, and then, within a year and a half, there's talk of all this happening. And they say it's long-term, long-term. They keep saying five years. My wife and I have been there a year and a half. Five years is not long-term for us. We wanted to retire in this house. We planned to live our whole lives there, raise our children there. We've got a four-year-old and a one-year-old. We get forced into a floodplain in our entire backyard. There's gonna be nowhere for them to play half the time because it's gonna be flooded. It's gonna be a swampy mess. There's gonna be nowhere for our children to do anything. We're gonna be forced out of our home by that, potentially, in five years. Another thing, I was curious who is pulling the permits and everything else and stuff for all this, and if they've been pulled or anything like that, or where they're at in that process. And then also, they keep saying this is a very big project, and we'll figure it out as we get there. I feel like a project this big should be laid out before you start taking steps towards it and everything else and stuff, and planned, before you just start jumping in not prepped, not prepared, not knowing what you're even gonna do. You know, bike trail, we'll figure it out when we get there. That really scares me and stuff, just not having more of a plan, not having more laid out, and not knowing what's really gonna happen, whether it's gonna ruin my wife and I's livelihood in our home, forcing us into a floodplain. So that's our biggest issue and our biggest concerns. But I mean, it's got my wife and I scared. I mean, we just bought this house. We can't afford to turn around and move again. And in five years, I mean, could we save up to Nusa again? Probably, but it's gonna drain our life savings again and put us back at square one, having to move because they wanna develop this whole area and everything else and stuff and make more money off it. So those are my biggest concerns. I appreciate you guys hearing me out and stuff, and that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, your input does matter, and we do appreciate you making this... Making us aware of it. You... I mean, today, for our purposes, we're trying to rezone just the front part of the property, just a portion of the 277 acres from agricultural to commercial.
Just very worried it's a slippery slope. And if they're starting with 40-some acres... I mean, I've seen some of the long-term plans and everything else and stuff on it. It's gonna be a lot of hardscape, everything like that. There's gonna be a lot of homes squeezed in this area, everything like that. They'd originally said, hey, they're gonna do executive lots at the back, 10 to 15-acre lots. When you actually got a hold of plans and looked at the plans and stuff, it looks like the biggest lots are like five. So it just seems like there's not a lot laid out. It seems like there's a lot of things that are being hidden and not being upfront about, which, I mean, just leads to even more fear about the whole situation.
I think it's more... My impression is it's just more of a developer that's bought some land that's trying to figure out what the options are. I don't see any... I hate when people... Or I don't hate it, but, you know, when you throw out that things aren't transparent, I don't get that feeling at all.
Okay.
Like, Lee and his group have been meeting with our zoning department pretty frequently. We're trying to really get a handle on the water.
I get it.
Just rest assured, we wanna understand the implications of this as well as you do, and we're working towards that. And I haven't felt like we're trying...
And it might not be hiding things from you guys. It just felt like it with us when I was at the last meeting. They said 10 to 15-acre lots, and then, when I actually got a copy of kind of a layout, everything was laid out in fives.
Okay.
It's like, it just seems contradictory when that's what they told us, and then they have something else on paper.
I think communication with the neighbors are gonna be really, really important in getting collaboration and getting the neighbors behind this project and getting them comfortable with water tables and infrastructure. So that's definitely something that this board's gonna work towards, trying to get the neighbors all in on this project and get you comfortable with the information and how it's all gonna look. And I'm sure Lee wants that as well. I mean, we all want the same things, so... But we'll work with you. Stay in touch with us. If you have any questions on this project, please be proactive in reaching out to us. If you're hearing something that doesn't make sense, we can probably clear it up pretty quickly.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for, I think, Miranda.
Yeah.
Miranda could come back up, please.
Yeah, I do say. Probably have the same question.
Could you just reiterate what the zoning commission... What their decision was and what their recommendation is?
Okay, yeah. Their recommendation was approval, but they asked that it be screened either by a fence or vegetation around the C2 area.
So they didn't address the issue of water or...
No, no, because, I mean, we're only looking at the front part. I mean, we're only looking at that 41 acres as a commercial area. I know the gentleman that just spoke, he lives east of there. I understand the concerns, but we're not at that phase. Lee said this is a project in motion, and they just wanna get this front area.
Could you just step through the process a little bit? So if we were to approve today a zoning change, then what would be the subsequent steps that would be necessary for the developer to actually take as they go forward that would potentially address the concerns that have been expressed?
Yes, so, as we move forward, they will have to present another concept plan. They presented this one. I did have concerns them bringing all of this forward, but they went ahead and they presented it. They did a write-up for you that was presented at the zoning commission. It was also presented to you. They wanted to show you guys a little glimpse of what their future plans are. We met with the City of Indianola, Charlie. We met with Mark Wilson and Inception Group. And we had... We voiced some of these concerns. We voiced the concerns with the bike trail, and that is going to be a big concern as we move forward. We... And I don't wanna speak for the City of Indianola, but as this moves forward, will this be annexed into the City of Indianola? I cannot speak on that at this time, but that was discussed because if, as this moves forward and you have more residential and the size of buildings that they're wanting to build, like duplexes or multi-dwelling units, that's gonna have to be hooked in the city sewer because that's what's in our ordinance now. Some of those things have to be... I believe, and I don't wanna misspeak for Lee, you know, the back part is gonna be more of your subdivision where each one might be on a septic system. So this is going to be a long process, but as we move forward with the next step, they're gonna have to come to us, and we're gonna have to figure out, do we need to rezone it to RR1? Does it need to re-resone to R3 or R4, which requires city services and things like that? So it is a phased-in project, but we will be back in front of the zoning commission and you multiple times as this moves forward.
But addressing the water concerns right now, can you speak to the permitting process that they'll have to go through as they develop out the commercial area if we go to a commercial zoning? Because I assume there will be additional permits required in order to complete this... The build-out of the commercial area.
He's... The commercial area up front is the...
Of course.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about specifically because that's what's before us today.
Correct, correct. Correct, correct.
But my question is, what are the steps that the developer will have to go to, to assure folks that there is proper drainage and that it does not raise the water table and all that sort of stuff? Are there additional steps beyond us just approving the C2 zone? That's the question I'm asking today.
Yeah.
What are the steps?
Well, if he's gonna disturb so much ground, I know he has to pull some kind of a DNR permit, NPDS, if I'm saying that correctly, after, is it twenty acres? Or, I can't remember the number. But he will have to pull a DNR permit because he's disturbing so much ground. So that, do we, because of it being zone commercial, are we looking at drainage? Not at this time. I mean, because it's not a development, it's not like a subdivision. He's not putting in infrastructure in that.
Yeah, and so my question is, just so we can assure the public here that there are many more additional steps before the actual development will actually take place.
Yes.
All we're doing here is just changing the zone.
He's gonna have, he will have to do something.
I just, I just wanna assure people that this is a very open, transparent process.
Yes.
And there are many steps here that have to be made. This is just the beginning of, of a process here where there's gonna be more touches, more opportunities to review, more site plans.
Yes.
Uh, that are presented that give more detail on how things will be actually.
Yes, and they wanted to present this ahead of time, just to give everybody a glimpse of what their plan is, so.
I, I think that's very admirable, that you actually put that out there for everybody. Most of the time, we only get the first piece, and we don't know what the back piece is gonna be. And to address Ryan and his question about, you know, he isn't quite sure what it's all gonna look like, I think it's because of the permits that he's gonna have to apply for and the processes in which he's gonna have to go through. So the lot sizes may have to change because of the water. So there's all of this moving parts that he's trying to take, plus, he, he has mentioned the economy, that he's not quite sure what that is, and it's my assumption that he's doing this first piece to kind of build some momentum to get the rest developed. That's my understanding. So anyways, I, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so what's, anything else from the public? Any other comments?
Just, I'll just say from here, since I've already been, water range from forty acres isn't insignificant, whether it's commercial or not, considering deserving the land and whether it affects someone that is sitting here today, it's gonna affect someone else. So not having that plan in place and not knowing what that water drainage study is going to be up front, you don't know what it's going to be until you have that done.
But I, to your point, you need to understand that there are several steps here. And so just the fact that we're just dealing with the rezoning question does not mean that the developer can actually, I mean, they have to go through a whole nother set of permits and, and things before this can actually be finished out. So we're just dealing with the zoning question today. We're not really dealing with the issues of infrastructure and how the actual project will take place. We're just giving the permission that a commercial designation for that area can take place. In order for the developer to do what they're planning to do, they have a whole series of many other things that they will have to do and address your concerns as part of that process. Otherwise, they won't get their permits, they won't do anything. They can't do that, because we don't have a site plan with what we have today. All we have is a drawing that tells us they wanna change this area from one type of development to another.
But it's.
That's all we're dealing with today.
Process is open to us to comment on at that point, 'cause you say that we have input on those, but yet, in the future on permitting processes, this feels like the only, where, the only input that we have at this point, and I've been through some of the commercial re-permitting processes, and that's basically between the owner, the developer, and the planning board and whoever's rezoning. That doesn't take in public comment from other people at all.
Well, the, the Board of Supervisors can always have, you can always come to a meeting and give public input into, into things. So you wanna help us clear this up?
Actually, I'm gonna let Tim Hill speak from the engineer's office. David Carroll worked, previous engineer, had worked with us on a commercial business that was the Dollar General off of G-50 Highway over by St. Charles. And at the time, there were some questions, but he required a stormwater plan and, but there's stuff in federal and state regulations that Tim's gonna address. So I think there are some additional stuff that we could possibly require when they bring in the site plan and plans.
Okay.
So I, I'll let Tim address that.
It's just good standard practice, anytime you have a commercial development coming in. You see it going through town, Tysons, they have a detention pond, they have detention ponds around Walmart. If you go to Fairway, there are detention ponds in the back. Just require them to have an engineer develop a stormwater management plan that we can review as part of their site plan. This is further down the road, it can still be rezoned, but before any site plan would get approved, that we review their stormwater management plan to make sure that water's being detained and all the flows are being accounted for, and that should take care of anybody's issues.
Okay, thank you. Go on.
So, question for legal, for Dawn. Is it, if we go ahead and approve the zoning, can we make that contingent on a solid stormwater management plan before any development ensues?
I think that's for the site plan, though.
I mean, just to make sure.
We don't have a site plan at this point.
Right, and that's where that would.
So it's gonna be, a stormwater management plan's gonna be part of a site plan that's gonna be required regardless of what we do today?
Because there's so much acreage involved in this, they're going to have to comply with DNR. Right now, the county doesn't have regulations, zoning, or, or this is regarding water management plan. Doesn't mean we don't work with the developer to see that put in place we have in the past.
I'll raise a question. Since we are in the development of new ordinances here, is this one of those situations where we've got the cart a little ahead of the horse, so to speak, with moving forward with this? Or should, should, will, I, I guess I, I'm hearing the concerns, and I, I know, Lee is an honorable gentleman, and I'm sure the group that they're trying to do the right thing. So we're kind of caught in, I think, a difficult situation here, because we don't have the assurances there necessarily right now that give us site plan requirements or stuff like that, so that you've got an adequate storm management system. But yet, on the other hand, you know, are we, if we vote not to go forward with the rezoning request today, I mean, what does that do in terms of future, you know, coming back? I, I don't know. Lee, what happens if we don't approve the, the rezoning today? I mean.
I mean, it's, it's the highway board, or I'm assuming you want commercial.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know what to say.
But I.
We're not putting any roads in. I, I, I mean, I've been, you know, doing smaller, you don't just put concrete in, they'll, they'll be on you like, there's a ton of things that gotta happen. I mean, it's a hilly area back there. I mean, it, and the engineer is working on just preliminary water issues right now. I mean, it's, the, yeah, I, basically, that farm wasn't cheap. It's going to take quite a while to finish this up. We were just looking for a little revenue with this outside storage. We go into grand scheme of things, we want about forty acres of commercial in front, which I assume on the highway corridor is what everybody would want there. And lately, to pay that kind of money to have outside storage there, it's gonna be rock. I mean, I guess, I mean, you're, it's, if you don't approve the commercial, I guess I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I mean, you, and as far as me being able to say, I mean, you can inquire these when, you know, word gets out. I mean, you know, is, is twenty acres ever gonna be, like the village? You know, there's companies out there looking for a lot of, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, Lindsay, I'm really trying to ask a procedural question here.
Well, and I, to be real honest, I've been in the zoning office for twenty-five years, and this is probably one of our largest requests for a commercial rezoning. They're usually a much smaller piece of ground. Obviously, this is a lot bigger. I know, I know there are concerns about the stormwater. I know, I know there's some things in the state and federal regulations. Right now, our ordinance doesn't currently address that. I, I know when David talked to the, the developers for Dollar General, they were more than willing, because that's an expectation of when they go and build in these cities or, you know, outside in these, you know, outside the unincorporated area. It, it's a requirement, so they're used to automatically coming up with that. I don't think we're gonna, going to have a hard time getting that request, because Miranda and I can follow through with that and make sure that, if, if that's something that your thinking's contingent upon, we can, you know, follow that through and request that. I think it is definitely something that needs to be addressed in, as I was just talking with Tim, in the zoning ordinance possibly, or in somebody's ordinance. If these are state and federal regulations, we need to be reflecting that in an ordinance at some point, and if we're doing ours right now, it's the time to probably put it in. But I, I wanna reassure you that that's a requirement in, so they didn't even bat an eye when David asked for that at, you know, same probably if they went to the city of Indianola, it's probably a requirement, and so they just know so. A lot of them, I mean, he had it ready and prepared. So I, I'm guessing Lee and that group would do the same thing, but we've never had a rezoning request for commercial for this size, and it's definitely something that we need to address further, what those requirements may be, because obviously there are water concerns and so.
So then, so then until we have ordinance language that actually requires, we really then on.
It's kind of a good, I would say it would probably be based on a good faith basis that yes, we would do it, or, or not, not yes, we would do it, but yes, they would provide that to us. But I definitely think if you put it in a motion, you know, it would definitely back it up. I don't think you would have a problem providing a stormwater plan for that area.
I mean, for like, right now, like, split out of the lots, you mean?
I think for the temporary, because of the size of the, the project, as she's indicating, because you've got, I'm not questioning your motives at all.
I get it, I just, I mean.
But I think for assurance from the public standpoint, we probably need to have some sort of understanding of what your, what the intentions are for management of the water. Dealing with just blooming for aesthetic purposes is not gonna, from my perspective, is probably not gonna be adequate to deal with the concerns, because as she indicated, this is a pretty large project, and it's in the county area. We don't have other things. It's, I think it's an expectation that there would be some sort of stormwater management plan put together, even with whatever starting of the development you're doing. That's all, that's all I'm suggesting, is that we probably need to include that at, because we don't have an ordinance now in place at the county that actually requires it. I would assume you're, you're willing to.
I mean, Snyder's looking at everything right now.
Sure, of course, of course.
I mean, like, specifically saying the water retention pond's gonna be right here. No, I can't promise that, you know, I have no, I mean, there's going to be a water retention pond, there has to be. I mean, water, it's not just this project, it's a huge concern everywhere now.
Typically.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do an underwater retention in a different field.
Yeah, yeah. Typically, you'd have at least some sort of issues regarding flow management, that, and runoff and flow. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's specific to this particular part of the parcel, but it would be able to handle whatever the development is going to be. So, in other words, in order for you to develop out the commercial sites, you'd have to have your flow management plan in place so that you can deal with the various rain events as they would come down. And in order for you have your site plan put together, basically, you'd have to have that put into your site plan, so that you kind of, you'll have the flexibility, but you'll have to deal with the issues of how the flow management's gonna happen and how the water's gonna be detained and, and those things before it would flow out. And that's, that is pretty typical. When you're changing ground from an ag to a commercial purpose, this is an important thing to do. I'll give you a quick example of this. I worked at Living History Farms twenty years ago. To the north of Living History Farms is Douglas Avenue, and Hubble owned a lot of land. They were gonna build exactly what you're, you're talking about here. Living History Farms was an undeveloped agricultural zone, and all of a sudden, houses were being developed north of Douglas. They met all the basic requirements, and guess what happened? The water started flowing. Rain events happened. The streets were there, they collected the water, it was now channeled. So what had before settled into the ground now was flowing across the surface into a channeled area, and it started to create the Grand Canyon in Living History Farms. So, 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 so what the city did with Living History Farms is we actually created a detention-retention area on Living History Farms ground, so that it would stop the Grand Canyon from developing on Living History Farms, and it actually held back. So that's the sort of thing that I think you're gonna need to do here on this, on this project.
Yeah, I'm assuming we're gonna need several retention areas. You know, if you get into the presidential, it's gonna be, you know, if it's a forty acre, I assume we're gonna lose four to five acres for retention, unless we do underground.
Yeah.
Though, you could put parking on top of them, but, yeah, I, I, I guess, I, I don't wanna, I, I guess I don't really know what I'm supposed to do. Is there gonna be water retention? Absolutely, there has to be. Nobody, it's, it's the law. I mean, you don't just start putting roads in and.
You, you might be surprised.
I don't know.
Do, do you think you can come up with a water management plan for just this small parcel? Like, when we start putting rock out there and, and water's gonna start flowing when we start doing just the temporary.
Even if it was right next to it right now.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the answer to all this is to come up with some kind of water management plan for, for the, for the C2, for what we wanna turn into C2, correct?
Yes, and, and we, we are trying to remediate that small little water area that the highway's on right now, so it may actually be in the works.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's gotta go, that's the entrance there, so.
Lindsay, you got something?
Yeah, Miranda and I were talking, and, you know, a, a lot of this stuff that's being addressed would be for structures. He's not building a structure. He's not even gonna be applying for a building permit in the zoning office for this, because he's not building a structure. It's gonna be an open fenced-in air, or an open area that's fenced in for outdoor storage, so it'd be like campers and boats. And so some of this stuff, we might be getting our cart ahead of the horse on, like, 'cause there's not going to actually be a structure there. I mean, he might have to, some other things with the DNR in the state to address, but that isn't on our end for that, like the NPDS permit, but there's not gonna be a structure on this.
Well, but.
Like, right now. Now, they do have other, you know, it would be.
Is we're, we're actually approving the zoning for the whole area, which.
You are, and so like, if they would, you know, but I want you to know this, outdoor storage will not have a building permit, but anything like, so, you know, and I know this use is a temporary.
It was just a idea to cover some of the area.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to the, the rezoning. I mean, that's, that's not, to me, that's not the issue.
Right.
The issue is the development side of it. And absent the ordinances in place which require site planning specifics as part of the development, that, that's, I think that's where we are.
Anybody else from the public?
And, and it might even be something you table, and we can look into a couple more things too, and, you know, permitting-wise, like, come back to you if you're questioning exactly what permits would be required from the DNR. We can look into that, you know, maybe give us, you know, till the twentieth or something.
And I know Snyder's already working on that, and yes, like, you've been talking there with Snyder, and he's doing some water issues right now.
And it might even have a half Snyder, half, you know, civil and half Snyder to address.
Okay. You okay with tabling this?
I'd like to table it.
Yeah, I think I am. I don't like to do that because of all the publishing and the costs, but I think this is one of those.
I think we're tabling.
And we'd love to hear from you.
My name's Anne Githens. I live at eighty-nine sixty-six, one hundred and forty-third avenue. A few people on the council, on supervisors, have dealt with me in the past. In regards to this property, we keep saying temporary and short term. Is five years of your life short term? Is ten years short term? What's immediate? There should be a 401 study done on this property. I have spoke to Rock Island Water District, and they, the permit has not been applied for before there's any movement on this larger of a development. I've spoke with Warren County Water. They've had no discussion on adding any of this to their department, because they would not have the capacity. I've spoke to Charlie with the city of Indianola, and the corporation, the LLC has been in discussions on it being a voluntary annexation. City of Indianola has a problem with wanting things square, which puts, would put me within the city limits, because their city limits go to one hundred and fortieth, one hundred and forty-third on the east end. And if this property comes in, which Phillips Floors is in, this property comes in and they square it, my property taxes would go from two thousand dollars a year to a thousand dollars a month. Now, I'm. Now, I'm 70 years old. I bought my property 15 years ago. It was a recycling property. I had to go through all the EPA standards to clean it up, to get it rezoned. Now, I just question what temporary is, why a 401 study's not already been requested? Because once you start putting gravel on this, you're changing the water. Once you start driving on it more than with farm equipment constantly, you're changing the depth and the pressure on the ground. Where's the 401 study? Has one been applied for? Now, I'm just a stupid little woman, but if I know what a 401 study is, I question why a developer doesn't. I got my information by making phone calls, I'm good at that, aren't I, Crystal?
Yes, you are.
But I just question, and if they square it up, what's the value of my property going to be then? Is it going to be another development? Mine's an egg. What are we gonna eat, guys? You keep giving this stuff away, what are we going to eat? There's not any more ground out here. And yeah, I like new houses too. But we have all these houses that are sitting empty. But I just question on what short term is. This is what we're going to do now, but yet, there's going to be six commercial businesses. When's that taking place? As soon as the rezoning goes in? As soon as they get sucked into the city? I just got too many questions. I think we need to hopefully step back and look at it and get a further plan of what's going on. And what the timetable is. I have to do it with my budget. You, you all, we all have budgets that we have to do it with. So I see there's no difference whether it's an LLC, an incorporation, a government, my personal life. What's the time plan? And not set in stone, but give me a little more than, well, this is short term. Short term in a motel's a week. Short term in life, we don't know. But this is affecting my life and will in the future, so I'd like to know what the plan is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You.
Anybody else from the public?
If they did square that out, that would also include our property, his property, his property.
We have no interest. We bought in the country to stay in the country and did not have commercial businesses or other properties abutting 50 yards right off the backside of us. We moved in where we moved to have our isolation. You know, we're, and, you know, we're at where we wanna be, and that, that's gonna become another contention in another meeting.
Okay.
Hey, guys. My name's Cory Peacock, I live at 8754 143rd Avenue. Going with the rezoning and everything, I have horses and sheep. I run a sheep farm, I run a horse farm. If you guys rezone this and square us up, I can't do that anymore because I'll be in the city. Then I'm gonna have all these taxes that I gotta pay that we can't afford by owning a sheep farm. This will just screw our whole livelihood, my kid's livelihood, that I was hoping to pass down to them. What are we gonna do then with, when we don't have any of this land anymore? And I don't think we think anything past that, we're just thinking about, oh, we're gonna put businesses along 6569. Aesthetically, I think it's gonna look like trash putting in a parking lot for campers, boats, and shit to just sit there. It ain't gonna look good. Let's just keep it agriculture, or maybe, you know, off of 6569, just don't zone us in with that 40 acres and keep our backside all agriculture still. Because the second you square us up, we're screwed. Our, our, our children, their children, we can never pass our land back down to them. Now, I can't farm anymore because I won't be able to afford it, because I won't be able to pay for the animals, I won't be able to pay the feed, I'm gonna be putting in more hours just for the taxes that we're gonna have to deal with. I mean, we don't have much land left in Indianola for ranching. And this is gonna take what we have away. Water issues, it's gonna affect things. It just, as she said, she says, it's just a small portion, it's no per, or no structures. A parking lot is a structure. It might not have walls, things like that, you clear things, it's gonna cause issues. And I think this will cause issues minus water damages, but it's gonna cause, um, issues for families down the road. We're gonna lose community members. We will sell, because we won't be able to afford what we have. And it's just what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm not, what do you mean by square it up?
I'm not sure, I think what that, when the city, and, and we have Charlie here, Charlie, you don't have to speak. But what they're concerned about is an annexation process where they would do that in a square, or they do that in a certain, and that would include their properties if the city would decide to annex in that manner. That's, that hasn't been decided, it probably hasn't been discussed.
77 acres.
What's that?
You mean, like, annex the whole 270?
Right, and then, and then square your, that property with, with everything else, so it, so it's, the city, according to what we heard, likes to do it that way. So if they do square it up, it would include the residents around it in that. So they become part of the city now, where maybe they can't have sheep and they can't do certain things.
Okay, I, I just, yeah.
That's the concern, and I think, those are easy things. Those, you know, here, did you wanna speak? I'd like to close this out, because we've got about 18 other things to talk about today.
Charlie, like they said, they have been speaking with the city, you know, because of the sewage and things like that. And if they request voluntary annexation, the city said it's not in their present plan, but it could be in their tenured plan, by tenure plan, to square it up. So that, that's the information I got from Charlie at the city.
Okay. So I think there, I, I just appreciate the public coming out and expressing this, I appreciate you, Lee. This, these are the things that we kinda run into when we're trying to develop land. I can tell you that, you know, from my perspective, we are, we do want commercial development, we do want businesses to come here, and it's a big push for us. So, let's, let's table this for now, if that's okay with everybody. And let's, let's regroup. I, the things I heard was water mitigation, aesthetics, and annexation are really the three primary things that we need to understand more. And I think with Snyder coming in and talking to the Board of Supervisors, maybe we can have a work session around this to address. These are valid, these are very valid, I'm sure you feel that they're valid. Let's do this right, let's get this put together where everybody can get comfortable with it, or as comfortable as possible. And let's just take some time, let's take 30 days and try to get back here and rezone this.
Okay.
Okay?
Do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
I'll move that we table this.
Second.
Do we have to go out of the public session first?
Oh, oh, okay. I'll make a motion to leave public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Okay, we're now out of public session.
I would move that we table the rezoning request here for 30 days.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to consider the application to use Warren County... The next item on the agenda is to consider application to use Warren County, the Warren County Annex on June 29, 2023 for a chamber concert with possible action. This is something that came to the Facilities Committee, this is, some of the downtown businesses wanna use the West Annex building for, for restroom facilities while they're having their event. And they've got the insurance forms in place, and they've been approved with their application from the Facilities Committee, but it's something that the Board of Supervisors actually needs to approve. So that's what we wanna do with this item.
I would move approval of the application as presented to us to use the restrooms in the annex facility.
Okay, I, I would second that, but I wanna make a, a note that on the application, it says rental fee, damage deposit of $1,000, and then the special event insurance required. I assume that we have that insurance provided?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Insurance is provided, and the fee was asked to be waived.
Okay. All right, I, I wasn't aware of the fee being waived. And then, so you're also aware that the use and cleanup of the restrooms will be part of this condition? Just wanna make sure.
Yes, currently, us and Warren County Economic Development are required to clean the restrooms outside of the special event as well.
Okay, super. I just wanna make that clear to the public, not just you, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'll make the motion with the fee being waived. To approve this.
Okay, I'll second that.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to consider abatement of property taxes, all accrued interest and special assessments on parcel number 48120190011 pursuant to Iowa Code 445.63 with possible action. This was an issue that came to the Board of Supervisors in one of our last work sessions. I think we were all pretty much in agreement that, based on that circumstance, where this property was being taxed for a finished basement, which it doesn't have for the two, two of the, the last two years. So we're just gonna credit that tax back that was unintentionally.
I would move abatement of the taxes as presented to us here for Resolution 23, which reads, be resolved, the property taxes, all accrued interest and special assessments on the parcel listed below be abated pursuant to 445.63 of the Iowa Code. I'm not gonna read the, the other citations here.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of ARPA payouts for invoice 167 to the City of Norwalk for certified site projects with possible action.
I would move payment of the invoice as presented to us in the amount of $1,485,148 using the ARPA funds as had been previously approved.
Second.
I just got one question. This invoice is from the City of Norwalk directly. I don't know that there's any proof that this, this money has been spent, or it's going to be spent, and I was wondering if there was anything in our ARPA regulations that would require, like, more specific documentation around, like, did this go for trenching services or putting in tile or?
We did request that, and we did request it with your application.
Hmm. It's in their contract.
People didn't get that, but this is what the board had approved.
Okay.
Previously, for the certified site development.
Correct.
Right.
So, no problems with demonstration to the federal government that this money was spent appropriately?
No problem.
Okay, great. We have a motion, and we have a second, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is to consider the approval of the sheriff's contract with possible action.
I can step in and say, I got this one.
Dawn's gonna present this one.
I'm stepping in for Doug today because he's in trial. This is a contract between, it's a collective bargaining agreement between Warren County Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Office, and then the Teamsters Local Union 238. They spent a great deal of time negotiating this contract, and I know you received a copy of it. We're asking today that you approve the contract, the collective bargaining agreement.
And this contract meets all the codes of the state of Iowa?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the union.
I've actually sat in on a few of these meetings, it's pretty intense, you know, a lot of, lot of back and forth, and a lot of red lines in the sand, and a lot of work to get to agreement. And I think the county's done a really good job in trying to negotiate on behalf of the residents and the Board of Supervisors. So, I see no issues.
And in, in the contract, it talks about the sheriff and the union will mutually agree on an overtime distribution process. And then the comment was, union to provide language for a revolving overtime bid process. We will need to make this an amendment. So, an addendum. Do we have that addendum now?
Those addendums are included.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Dawn?
Do I motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's contract as referenced in our packet with...
The collective bargaining agreement?
Uh, the collective bargaining, bargaining, bargaining agreement.
I will second the motion.
Okay, just clarification, it is from July 1st of this year until June 30th of 2026?
Yes.
Okay. So three years, all right.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. Contract is approved. The next item on our agenda is the, to consider county medical examiner investigators and appointments pursuant to Iowa Code Section 331-802 parent 3 with possible action.
So this is an annual update of medical death investigators, whereas Iowa Code Section 331.802 parent 3 requires that a physician be appointed by the Board of Supervisors of a county to act in an official capacity to investigate and make a report of any death outlined in the aforementioned code. And whereas the medical, county medical examiner is authorized to appoint deputy county medical examiners to assist him or her in the fulfillment of their duties. And whereas the county medical examiner is authorized to recommend county medical examiner investigators to the county board of supervisors and to the state medical examiner for appointment to assist them in their duties. So therefore, be it resolved, the Warren County Board of Supervisors in Warren County, Iowa, that the following appointments be made. County Medical Examiner is Dr. Lori Miller, DO, Associate Medical Examiner, Dr. Eric Ash, MD, and Dr. Joseph Kimball, DO. Medical Death Investigators, Jeff Dumermuth is the lead investigator, Michelle Hunter-Dose, ARNP, Lee Coons, PM, Travis Lovett, RN, Kayla Shark, PM, John Carter, RN, and Associate Investigators, Terry Van Cooten, Marv Venderweil, Jonna Van Ness, Don Bender, and Tracy Hall.
I would move the resolution as just read.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That is approved. So the next item on the agenda is to consider appointing Joe Gavin to the Condemnation Compensation Commission, persons having knowledge of property values by reason of occupation with possible action.
I would make a motion to approve Joe Gavin.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye. That is approved. Item number 10, consider standard Title VI non-discrimination assurances between the United States DOT and Warren County for DOT Order Number 1050.28, and authorize the board chair to sign with possible action. Not sure what this is.
I think we skipped over nine, but I got nine, 10, and 11s.
You got nine, okay, let's, let's hit number nine. I'll read that. Consider approval of quotes and award contract for painted pavement markings and authorize the board chair to sign with possible action.
This is our annual pavement marking quotes we put out, it's to paint the centerline stripes and the head stripes, some island markings, but we do this every year, just to keep everything bright and visible, especially at nighttime and in the wintertime. We received three quotes, and I'll read the quotes. Vogel Traffic Services, $93,884.33. Quality Striping Inc., $107,387.28. And Iowa Plains and Signing, $173,745.1. We recommend awarding a contract to Vogel Traffic Services in the amount of $93,884.33.
That's incredible to me. There's an $80,000 difference in those bids. That's why we like to get more than one bid, you know?
As long as they do the job and can do it well, yes.
Have you used Vogel Traffic Services before?
We have, they haven't bid on it the last few years, we've only been getting one to two bids, and Quality Striping's had it the last few years, but Vogel does a good job too, so.
but Vogal does a good job too, so.
Well, good job on going out and getting the bids for this. I see no issues.
I would move Resolution 23 regarding pavement markings and the awarding of the contract to Vogal Traffic Services in the amount of $93,884.33 with authorization of the chair to sign the contract.
Second.
Local.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Motion is approved. So I already read number 10. You wanna cover that?
Yeah. Number 10, 10 and 11 kinda go together. They're both documents that we need to update anytime a board chair changes or the Title VI coordinator changes. We haven't updated it since 2020, I believe. So we should've done it when you became board chair. And we're doing it this time because David was the Title VI coordinator and he's no longer here. So this puts you, Darren, as the LPA head on the documents and me as the Title VI coordinator. These documents are required for civil rights complaints. Make sure we adhere to all the requirements. We need to do it for anytime we receive federal aid for roads and bridges. It's just required documentation. We do have a training coming up in two weeks where the DOT guy's coming and we're just having a two-hour meeting to discuss everything we've been deficient in and things we've done well, so.
I would move improvement, approval of the Standard Title VI Non-Discrimination Assurances document as presented by Tim Hill, giving the, updating the board chair and Title VI coordinator changes.
Second.
Local.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. And then item 11, Tim. Consider Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement between Iowa DOT and Warren County and authorize board chair to sign with possible action.
That goes hand in hand with number 10, so.
I would move approval of the Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement as presented by Tim Hill to meet the federal requirements to receive federal funds. And also, this provides the new board chair and Title VI coordinator changes.
Second.
Local.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Motion is approved. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider MSA contract amendment number one for Warren County zoning revisions 2022 with possible action. Seen a lot of you today, Lindsay.
At least she's walking.
Yeah.
Yes. That's great.
That's a major step forward.
Celebrating. So we started doing a temporary, working into a temporary land use regulation with MSA. The original contract was for $10,000. We have, as you look at the timeline, it started back in November. And so we've had some, a lot of additional meetings that weren't necessarily in the initial scope and plan. And we've had some work sessions thrown in there with, we've spent over six hours in work sessions with our zoning commission and MSA as well. We knew things were starting to get kinda tight on the budget part of that, so I asked them to submit an amendment to this contract so that we can continue to have the work sessions and the meetings. I think that's important during this temporary land use regulation. So it moved the contract from $10,000 to not exceed $30,000, so. And I know Chris is here too.
So the original contract was, like, the original, original contract was for around $90,000 to $100,000, correct?
Okay. So the, the, the land use plan and zoning ordinance, that's a 97, that was, came in at $97,000. So we're still, okay. This was the additional to address these ordinance changes and the issues and the discrepancies in the definitions. And so now, as I said, as we're getting into it and I, I think they've seen and everybody sees the differences and where there are so many discrepancies. It's, it's taking a lot more time than maybe we originally thought and they thought, so.
But I mean, we were prepared for it to increase. I mean, we, we knew that the potential was there.
Yeah. And I, and, and to ask if we have it to cover it, I had asked for up to $300,000 for this project. So there was plenty, because when we did the one back in 2002, it was over $200,000 for the land use plan and zoning ordinance. So they, theirs came in significantly less at that. So we do have a little bit of room to, to play doing this to make sure that this portion of it is in place and gets us guided in the right direction.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
So the total for the, what we're gonna pay MSA for this land use planning and ordinance change is $97,000 plus an additional $30,000. So the overall cost for the project?
This is a separate contract. So this contract originally started at $10,000 and I'm asking you to change it to the, to no more than $30,000 for them.
Okay. So the total payout to MSA based on if we approve this is around $127,000, correct? I'm understanding that.
If we merge the two contracts together.
Okay. No problem. That's, that's less than, that, that's actually very good from where we were at, so. Okay.
I would move amendment of the existing contract with MSA for ordinance work to, from $10,000 to $30,000 for completion of the ordinance updates as presented.
Second.
Local, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider an easement for Warren County Water District on parcel 54969 Gear Street, Pearl, Iowa, for real water service with possible action.
This is associated with the Pearl Satellite Shop that was an ARPA-funded project. We now have the structure built. We, the parts we have left is we need to get water installed, get our septic installed, and get electric hooked up to it, then it'll be ready for use. So this is just to enable us to get a water meter pit installed for hooking up our water.
So the costs associated with this is in the budget for the project?
Yeah. It's accounted for.
Okay.
It'll be $4,500 as Warren Waters' fee for water meter pit installation.
Okay.
So the source of funding on this is the ARPA?
Yes. Correct.
I'll make a motion to get service to the property located at 4969 Gear Street in Pearl.
Do you approve an easement?
Oh, just for the easement. Okay. Scratch that. Okay. Make a motion that the easement be approved by the Board of Supervisors for 4969 Gear Street in Pearl. Okay.
Second. Local, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Motion is approved. Okay. Item number 14, consider approval of ARPA funds for the recorder. Arca Search Digital Archiving Services with possible action. And Jordan's here to talk to us about this. Good morning, Jordan.
Good morning, Jordan.
Morning.
Per the last discussion that we had over this, the contract for Arca Search is to complete the scanning for just our deed books. So that's gonna be books A through Z and books 1 through 183. And that'll be roughly 130,000 images. Do you guys have any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
No.
I don't either.
Okay. I think we can make approval.
I have a question related to our overall ARPA funds as a whole.
Well, go ahead and ask that. Is it the total amount you want?
Well, I'm assuming this is part of the remainder amount that we've been working off. So this is whittling down
Correct.
off of that, like, $600,000 that's remaining?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I really had a question about. It didn't relate to the project.
Yeah. Good question, though. We wanna be tracking that all the way, so.
All right.
I would move approval of the scanning project to be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of $109,964.
Second.
Local, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. One of the most amazing things I've learned is how expensive it is to store your documents for the county. And we have documents in our sheriff's department and documents in our recorder's office and our auditor's office. We have documents that are required by the state to keep forever. And these are all paper documents. And what we're trying to do is, we have rooms full of paper documents at the county. So our option is to digitize those documents and store them in the cloud or store them on a server. And that's what we're attempting to do. It's been very expensive. But thank you, Jordan, for spearheading that effort and we're getting there. Next item on the agenda is to receive and file reports from Veteran Affairs.
Make a motion to receive and file the Veteran Affairs report.
Second.
Local, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.[1730.38]